Good night, everybody. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the town council. It is seven twenty eight. This is the previously scheduled seven P M. Meeting. We ran a little late on our public hearing, but here we are. Penny, will you call the roll?
Well, it has already left my possession.
All right.
But it is the same as what I had earlier.
Everybody's still here. Christina, is Christina still online?
I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so it's the same.
Is Luke?
I'm here in person.
Look out there.
Is anyone?
Look, look, look at, look at.
Lucas, I hear this voice.
I heard Lucas, Lucas.
Luke, I am your father.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I got you. Luke, thank you. All right, we have, we have a hundred percent quorum. It's on our agenda. Let's do a quick pledge of allegiance. So we follow the rules.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak up to the town council on topics on our agenda. Scheduled for review or vote. Speakers are limited to two minutes depending on number of speakers. Would anybody in the audience like to speak on these two items? Seeing none, we move on. Item number four, it's two twenty Elm Street.
Steve, hold on one second. Tucker, Luke texted me, said he's in the waiting room. Yeah.
I feel like we've really become very close friends.
All right. Okay, Luke, meet yourself. All right, here we go. Item number four, two twenty Elm Street. Approval of the following project appropriation and bond authorization and Kelly Lenz, Bill Ossman. And I see Tiger out there as well. Tiger's gonna handle, okay? And I also see, I see Brian Lettsy out there too. Dr. Lettsy, welcome. How are you? All right, so Tiger, you want to present?
So yes, so this is a, an approval of a project for the bond authorization for the renovation of two twenty Elm Street for the Board of Ed offices. It's already passed through the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, and we're on to the council for final approval. This, uh, we, uh, we went out to bid for this project, so these are actually harder numbers. We had five bids. We are in the process of, uh, discussing the, the project with, uh, the two low bids. The numbers in front of you would represent the worst case scenario, meaning that the, the low bid plus contingency plus the alternates that we'd like to perform. But we feel that there's some room for some value engineering in there. The total overall ask is a hundred and, uh, one million, three hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. And I'm willing to take questions. We have Dr. Lettsy on the line as well for, uh, for specifics.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I know everybody watched the Board of Finance meeting, uh, and everybody should be up to speed on, on the reasoning behind the additional work that's being done and the cost associated with it. But since we have Brian here, uh, Brian, can you just give us literally five minutes on the, um, the, maybe the changes that we, that we all walked through the building originally and, and, uh, had a sense of what, what we were gonna do there, but maybe you can just walk us through.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Um, let me just pull up on my screen here. I do have a a layout as well. Well, as you know, and, uh, we've been in conversation and hello, everybody. Nice to see you all. I'll be seeing you all very soon for budget, but this is a little preview out of cycle, but the, um, we've been working through the plans for the two twenty building really since it was purchased back in the spring. And, um, we're, we're excited in lots of ways for it. Um, we're challenged a little bit by it, and that's how change is in general, right? So what we're excited about is what it does for our, uh, student programs. Essentially, they are moving into about the same square footage overall, uh, from where they are now at thirty nine Locusts, but we'll be able to really design those spaces for them, for their needs and for, for the, the kids that are there. Uh, the essentially the way that the building's being set up is when you, if you're looking at the front of the building from Elm, everything to the right of the front door is going to be student based. That's where our two student programs are going, and everything to the left will be the central office space. Uh, the students will be set up where launches in the front of the building, the alternative high schools in the back, and then they'll have some shared space in the middle. And then on the left, of course, the, the twenty seven folks who work every day at central office. And then actually, there's twenty eight now. We're going down to twenty seven. We couldn't quite get the twenty eighth in there, uh, which is fine. We're working all that out. On the left-hand side, we're sort of, we're getting moved into space that really was designed for, I understand to be about ten people who are with the bank and the corporate offices. So there's, um, some work that has to be done. You know, there's a big, beautiful conference room there. We tried every which way to save that. We're not able to save that because we really need that space for offices. Uh, the, the way that it's all coming together, we think, I think it's going to work. It's going to work well. And it's definitely going to be great for our students who are on that, uh, the other half of the building. So we're excited about that part. For us in our central office space, you know, we're going down quite a bit in the overall footage. So we really had to figure out how can we use every inch of the space. We had gone in thinking that we could use the basement for some file storage and some, some of the, uh, the other things that take up space in a, in a building, but turns out we really can't do that, um, for a couple of different reasons. So we've had to, again, be very creative, and I think the plan, I know the plan is very creative in, in making use of every, every square inch that we can. But we really didn't know what the price was until we hit the street with the bid and were able to get some real numbers back and and that's what, um, what leads us to the number that we're talking about tonight and what, what got us here, you know, tonight. And so the, yeah, I can, I can share an image if that's helpful. If anyone wants to see the, the layout, I can.
That'd be great.
You want me to do that?
Yeah, let's take a look.
Okay, let's see. Thank you, Tucker. So I'll zoom in because I know what it's like to look at, uh, on these screens from, from afar. So I'll just start with the student side. So if you can see my cursor down here is the front door. If you can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the launch program right here to the right. And actually, the, the student programs, one of the reasons, the primary reason they're on that side of the building is because they have access directly to the parking lot and the doors right to the outside. So they have their own entrance and exit, which is very important for both programs. So on the launch side, they'll enter from, um, the right over here coming into these doors here. They'll have a, an area where they can meet and greet and kind of, and get settled. There's a gathering room in the front of the building that exists. Then if you go through, this is the main program room. If you come in the door and go up to the right, you get into, again, our launch program is a life skills program. So you'll see there are cubbies for the students for them to organize their things as they get in and, and get settled. There are also three sinks. Again, Cubby's behind them. We're doing things shaving, brushing teeth, doing, uh, personal care kinds of things. And then a bathroom, of course, it is ADA. The, this where it says pocket door right here. Going through here, this is the shared space for the two programs. And here you have a washer and a dry, and a dryer and a pantry, which we need for launch. You have a sink and then a stove top here for cooking again and life skills with launch and then some areas to, uh, to sit, to eat, or to sit while somebody else is doing the cooking, what have you. And a, you know, single wins, the window to the outside. And if you go up, here's the other entry into the high school area. And this is for our downtown campus or alternative high school. And over here, we have our main classroom in the back of the building. There's an area for students to gather here, to gather here, and then this will most likely turn into an office for our social worker who's down there, because as you know, we've got social work, psychologists, others. We've got some full-time staff there, and then we have some itinerant staff as well who come back and forth from the high school. So it's likely this lounge in the back would help them out too, as a place just to keep their things and then the classroom in the back. Glad to answer any questions on the student side. Otherwise, we can move over to the, um, central office side, whatever you prefer.
Yeah, let's go central office. Thanks, Brian.
Okay. So front of the building. Now this will be our main entrance will be, of course, in the front. There's also a nice entrance in the back. So I'm, I'm assuming and thinking that most of the employees as we come through will come in through the back. This is a shared pantry space. You see, it's a little bit tight, but it's an area for us to, um, get together with, there's, there'll be a refrigerator in here, a sink, coffee pot, um, you know, an area just for, uh, for lunch or what have you. We've carved out the offices around the outside. You see each one essentially has one window as we're going across. For Roy, for our outreach, um, social worker, for another social worker position there. Right now, we've got, I mentioned, we're going down one person at central office just because of the, uh, the constraints, and that's fine because it's, it's, it's perfectly fine to have that position in a building. We've worked that out. The Dr. Crenti Deputy Superintendent is here. Superintendent's office is here. It's a tricky one because of this, um, the structural column. So we've got to work around that and the windows. The Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources Finance, you see, this is the, if you remember the space, this here is the existing conference room. So this is where we're turning those into the three spaces. Then we have the, uh, the assistant who supports finance and facilities. Tracy Haberman is our Budget Director, the Facilities Director. And this is the former CEO's office in the front that we're converting into the conference room. So the conference room table that's there, we're anticipating being able to fit in there with the furniture. And we would turn that office, which was, which faces Elm, right, Elm's out here, uh, that will turn into the, uh, conference room. We also need a space for new mothers in this. Uh, there's no other area because, um, there's quite a bit of glass that's projected to be in the spaces due to how many people we're putting interior. So the in this space here, this is for the finance department. You know, we have the cubes right now that they're in. And those cubes have been measured and with Sanford Office Furniture's help, we'll be able to move those over. So we're going to be repurposing this furniture in the front of the building. When the public enters and comes in, there'll be a reception here, which is our district registrar. Because often a lot of, we've got quite a bit of traffic that comes through for people who are registering into the school district at different times of the year. So that, the district registrar will be reception here. We have an onsite, um, he's not the tech director, really. He's our data manager, but he would be here and he's doing our database work and other things. So he's available, but a little bit segregated. And here we have, uh, another data technician and our newly hired, um, communications webmaster specialist. So the tech is in the front with the, um, district registrar. So is, so then that's the most of the traffic. So it keeps it to the front instead of having to walk throughout the space to get there. As you move up a little bit, you see the human resources cubes. Again, we have them on site and they're, they've all been sized in here. And they'll also have a door to get back to this extra space where we have some filing, because if you, if you look at the space we have now, we, we have quite a bit of files that we access every day. Most of it through human resources, quite a bit through finance as well. So you see the, um, their files are here. And I'll loop around in just a sec. And then my assistant, the assistant to the Deputy Superintendent, and then two special education specialists here, um, would be the other four. See, we've got the twelve cubes here existing that are going to be moved over, and that's a bit of an efficiency there. We worked hard to try to figure out how to, um, accommodate the filing. There's a system that's there now that the bank had used. And so the, our architect Ryan was able to figure out a way to reconfigure this space in here to use that existing system. It has three shelves. We're only going to be able to use two, but it really is a game changer in terms of space for filing. So this will be our copy machine will be here. There'll just be the one. There's, um, a, a check printer here. That's a secure printer. Excuse me, and then we'll have, uh, some other space for sorting or whatever you have. So this, this was creative and this, um, necessitated us moving the air handlers downstairs, but the plan that we have and what we brought out to the street has that, uh, in, in place. And then we are actually, if you remember in the space, when you come into the front, this is a common area with the elevator, the stairs, the two bathrooms and mailboxes here. We're actually moving the doors that are here. We're going to be moving those and putting a new, um, glass partition door here. And then really using this space as well for Board of Ed so that we have the bathrooms for the staff. And it's also overflow for the kids should they need it. There's a bathroom for alternative. Actually, there's two, and then there's one for the launch, but it keeps the bathroom separate from the public. Um, and then we'll also have our mailboxes out here. So that's, um, trying to make use, we're going down in total square footage. Um, as I said, it's about a wash for the kids, which we're excited about. For us, we're going down about, um, five thousand square feet or so. But that is, it's conference rooms. You know, right now, we've got a large conference room and a couple of smaller ones that we use. And, and then an entire office that's not fitting. So we're going to be really looking to use office space for conference rooms where we need to, and we figure in the evening or when launch is not in session, this launch gathering room becomes available with an outdoor door here. So that's another, um, overflow space we can use if need be for our, uh, our meetings and things. If launch is not in session or using that space. So it's quite a bit, you know, it's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, but it's also a, uh, you know, pretty significant undertaking to move well, you know, fifty-five people or so into, into the first floor of the building. Um, so we are. So here we are.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, question from the council, Tom.
Yeah, Brian, when we first heard about this, of course, there was some sticker shock. And, and just to be clear, Tiger, the, you mentioned a million, three fifty-nine, but that's additive on top of the seven fifty that was projected earlier?
Yeah, that's well, six fifty. We had seven fifty. We had some additional, we had some costs that we had to do. We had to fill in the floor area, some additional work. So we have a six fifty remaining. So yes, so it's additive, so it's six fifty, but inclusive of that is a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar contingency or twenty percent. So, um, you have to kind of back that off, right? So if you, uh, all in the, uh, the, the present low bid was one point four nine million. We have two alternates that, uh, we'd like to pursue alternate three and four that we had, that we wanted to see pricing on, that we want to pursue. One for forty-two thousand, one for a hundred and forty-six, which gives us a subtotal of one, six, seven, eight. We add on the contingency at that point of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, and we come to two zero one four, two point zero one four million. We minus the six fifty that we have remaining from the original allotment, and we're at the, uh, one million, three five eight.
Just to continue that, uh, so when we first heard these numbers, there was some sticker shock. Boy, this, this sounds a lot more than we were originally told it would cost. But of course, looking at Brian's, um, presentation, you know, it's, it becomes more clearer than we had the ability to appreciate earlier that we're cramming. We're, we're, we're almost more than tripling the number of users in the facility from what it was before. And the use is nothing resembling an investment bank. It's absolutely unique. And so, you know, that, that, that's good to know. But I think the question some of us still have is why were we working with such a low number earlier on? Was, was it that we weren't taking into account the, I don't know if this is a question for Kevin or for Brian or Tiger. Was it that we hadn't actually looked at the actual requirements? I mean, we must have been capable of coming a little closer if we had done that.
Do you want to take a look at that? You want to take a stab at that? Or the, uh, the original thought for us when we came up with the original seven fifty, seven hundred thousand was that we thought originally that the, that the, that the board would come in, take a look at the space and then grow into it, right? So, and then come back to want to build it to their own. Right? To come in and live in it and then build it to their own. This is two different schools of thought. There's one to build it to your own before you come in or come in, try to utilize the space and then build it. It's probably better that you come in, build it to your, to your liking and then use it so that you don't disrupt your, your staff during the entire process of having to renovate it. So that, that's really the thought was that we, we took it, um, and wound up cutting up the offices where we thought they would want to cut up the offices. We necessarily didn't take into account the, uh, the two programs and, um, their needs um, as well. So which is, which are, you know, which are fantastic. So both prior programs are fantastic. So, uh, you know, given the fact of what we were looking at originally as to what we thought might occur versus what in essence is actually occurring. You might come out with the exact same number, only we're spending it upfront and allowing the Board of Ed to then come into the space and not have to be disrupted through that process after. So, um, versus you know, trying to fit it for them for a certain purpose and then have them grow into it and, uh, renovate as, as they, as they see fit, which necessarily might have been even more money. So.
Thanks, Tiger.
You're welcome.
Want to comment, Kevin?
Well, you know, we expect to really, the office space is office space, and it was pretty nice office space.
Yeah.
But obviously, a few things changes. Dr. Lettsy mentioned, uh, the, the storage down in the basement, which is ample, can't be used because the elevator doesn't go to the basement. And, uh, so when you look at some of the logistical changes, um, and you know, this is going to be their home for the next forty years or longer. So you want to do it right. We probably should have allowed for more in the beginning. George Zagrenski and I, and I think Dr. Lettsy at the time, you know, threw in seven fifty as a number, realizing most of it was going to be for the launch and the the, the, the education space. But, um, it's certainly going to be, uh, still a bargain in terms of not paying rent to a private landlord, so.
Just one more thought, question, request, I guess, is can we see, uh, the projection all over again? So when, when we first modeled out what this would look like financially over time, we factored in seven fifty, but now the number's a lot different. Can we see a?
Uh, Board of Finance has asked for that.
Great.
Hi, Christina, hand raised.
Hi, um, Dr. Lettsy, in looking at your plan, I just have a couple of questions. One, I didn't expect the life skills and the launch or the launch program, the high school program to be so large and occupy so much of the space. So that threw me, but I thought we were, we had given you the lower level plus a portion of the second floor. Did that disappear somehow?
It did, Christina. In the final negotiations with the owner upstairs, um, that was negotiated out.
So you're limited. There's no expansion space whatsoever.
Right, that was, um, I think it was about seven hundred fifty square feet or so of that space.
Um, okay, uh, the number the number of students that you have for the high school program and for the launch program, what is the total? How much has it grown?
So it flexes depending upon the school year. Launch can run anywhere from four to eight students. And of course, with each student, of course, there's the corresponding adults and folks that are with them. And then our, our alternative program, it can start the year at about eleven or twelve, and it can flex up to about sixteen, eighteen.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and the last question I have is, and just looking from a distance at the plans, I'm questioning whether it will meet all ADA standards because some of the turning radiuses are, are not large enough, let's say.
Yep, I see, um, yeah, our architect has worked very carefully to make sure that he does. So you can see, I, and I'd be glad, I know this is, yeah, something you know very well. So I'd be glad to send you the plan if you'd like, um, to take a look at it. But we've asked the question, he's assured us that, yes, the, between the bathrooms and others, I mean, it's, and as you know, in the bathrooms, that you need quite a lot of space. Which is, we, which is disappointing in one way because we're looking at every inch, but we certainly understand why it's so important. So, yeah.
Absolutely. I would like to see it. If you can send it, I would appreciate it.
I'll be glad to.
Okay. And, uh, a question for Kevin. Kevin, since we negotiated out seven hundred fifty square feet, do we still hold a majority of ownership in the building?
It's still fifty fifty. Um, actually, it went to fifty fifty. It was going to be a split where the town had more, um, because that, but it's, it's fifty fifty. We have a partner who's a, a, a real estate guy who lives in New Canaan now. He's thrilled with, he's thrilled with his investment. Um, he's got some very surprising news about a, a, respect to tenant, uh, for, for part, part of the second floor. So, um, he's a great guy to work with. I would say that, you know, we might, when, when Dr. Lettsy mentioned he's, he's going down about five thousand square feet, the, the current building was very inefficient, had bathrooms on both floors. It had excess space really because they, you sort of took over the insurance space that really wasn't contemplated originally for the so, um, but the launch program has essentially about the same space or perhaps a little more than they had over there. So it really works well for the education program. It's more efficient. And, um, you know, keep in mind, there's, there's hundreds of thousands of square feet out in the sacks in the high school for maybe a couple of employees to move over there that, where they used to be. So there's always alternatives in terms of where you're going to put employees.
Yeah, I just wish we would have leased the extra space we had and not just sold it. I didn't think that was the agreement that we had made when we approved the project, but thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Hi, Dr. Lettsy. It's Kim Norton. Looks like you've got a really creative solution and, um, you know, congrats on figuring that out. I guess my question is if the launch program or the alternative high school grows, what would be the plan of how to accommodate those students? Because I know there is, uh, thoughts that the demographics are changing and that there might be more kids coming into the school system in a couple of years.
That's a tough question because as I mentioned, you know, we're trying to use every square inch. I think that, um,
Brian, let me mention that, you know, the, the launch program is eighteen to twenty-two year olds now. You know, so they're older people. They're not the older um, adults than, than younger people. As far as the, uh, the, uh, alternative program, I think the city of Stanford has thirty total with, with much larger population in their special. So, um, the alternative program is really a well, Dr. Lettsy can explain better how it does flex and who it serves. So.
That's right. You know, and that, one of the important efficiencies that we capture and we have from the start with both of these programs is having them co-located with the central office staff so that we're not hiring principals and other administrators. And, you know, we like it that way too, because we're more involved and, you know, connected to what's going on. You know, I think that that's a problem we have to solve when, when we, when we get there. I'd love to say, here's the future-proof plan, but we really aren't, aren't there. I think that, um, it'll certainly be a period of time, as Kevin mentioned, it is true. The way we designed the alternative program, uh, it is a flexible model to with staffing to be able to go up to about eighteen, twenty students and keep the mod, staffing model in place. So I think we'd have to live in the space a little bit and, and see, you know, there's there may, maybe the front conference room and launch isn't used all that much, and there are options there. You know, those students are, they're more itinerant than, say, the alternative students, right? They're, they come in the morning, they go through programming, they might go out for internships at different times and then come back. So I think we have to live in the space before thinking about what the solution to, a very real question you ask is, um, you know, as if we had to think about, can other positions be moved into the buildings? I mean, that's, that's a tough question too, because we've got, you know, the, the core functions functioning together. We've got a couple of offices. Maybe there's some space there. Um, but I think the first step would be to, to get there. And then try to figure out if and when that becomes a problem, you know, what, what opportunities might exist. Sorry, sorry to not give you a direct answer, Kim.
No, that's okay. I was just thinking, you know, staggered attendance, staggered hours or alternative times for kids to come in. You could use the space. I don't know if that's an option, and that's something I'm sure you guys will figure out, but it's a way to use it, you know, more, uh, more time than just a certain amount, amount of hours.
Sure. And that is where the launch program, maybe there's some flexibility there because they're offsite more, and can the alternative program use launch space while they're undoing internships? You know, there are options. I just want to, don't want to get too far ahead, uh, without sort of getting in this, you know, living there first for a bit.
But the projected bubble that we might get in kindergarten, it's going to be quite a few years before they will age into the alternative high school. So this isn't an immediate.
It may not be our problem to solve.
And the strong bias is to keep kids mainstreamed into, into the high school rather than to the alternative program. So.
One more before we're done.
Okay, I'm going to ask one, Brian, just a yes or no answer, and, and because I don't want to get in the weeds on this, but I'm assuming for the amount of money we're putting into this building that security has been looked at, uh, six ways to Sunday on this, right? Obviously.
Absolutely.
With students, the interaction, it, where that, where that building is.
Correct. Yep, with students there, that was, uh, front and center in all of our thinking. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Christina Ross has her hand up again.
Christina.
I forgot what I was going to ask. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Robin.
I just have a question about the shareholder. I thought when this brought us that we were going to be majority stakeholder, the condo.
No, as ended up, the, the space is actually exactly fifty fifty, because when we took over part of the lobby, which was common space, um, and lost, so losing seven hundred fifty square feet on the top, we gained space, space on, on the lobby to keep the bathrooms only exclusively for the use of the, so that was, the, the swap ended up getting into fifty fifty. We were fifty-two to forty-eight, I think, um, and, and, uh, but that swap of the upstairs space for the downtown lot, lobby, make that exclusive for the first floor, ma, made it fifty fifty. And by the way, one of the conditions of the investor, the, the other owner was he wanted to be fifty fifty. So that's, that.
What does that do with voting rights?
Again, we, we have a equal partner. Was it great, a great partner? And, uh, fifty fifty kind of forces you to agree upon a solution. So.
So what if you get a tenant that you're not agreeing on? It's, it's a or how does that work?
Well, again, I, this, uh, this owner, um, is going to have very high-class tenants. So he already has one who, uh, and he's talking, he's close to closing on another. close to closing on another one, which will be a very exciting Fortune five hundred, uh, company, and, um, and, uh, he, but he's very considerable, high-quality tenants. He wants, it's, it's a class A billing.
Thank you.
Steve, we have a question from Christina Ross.
Oh, Christina, you remember.
Fine, fine. Passed.
That's okay. Anybody else before we?
I, I just wanna say, it feels a little bait and switchish with the price of the construction going up and the ownership. Like, I thought that was a keep, um, item that we would have more, uh, ownership than whoever came in, so.
Again, you have to have a willing buyer on the other side, and he, he wanted to be fifty fifty, and he, the space is almost exactly fifty fifty, so, so it's not something we were trying to.
I get that, but I thought we all agreed that we wanted fifty-one or fifty-two.
I think by the time the transaction approved, we were at the fifty fifty. We didn't bring in transaction that we changed after the approvals.
Did the price drop, Kevin?
It did. It did, and we had to adjust based upon the square footage we were owning and, and, and so the, the, uh, he had to pay more, he, um, for his space. So it's not as though we had it with the, the deal wasn't changed by the time, but you approved. We, we were fifty fifty at that point, but obviously, last December, you know, when we, uh, December twenty-one, we, um, essentially in three weeks, had a, a, a buyer who came in late and agreed to close in January, and he, we, we went to fifty fifty, but we were at fifty-two, forty-eight before the, uh, but what was brought to you to approve was fifty fifty.
And it, it does seem like the space is really maxed out, so I think going forward, if the Board of Ed and the students, if that expands in the interim before you leave this, like, hopefully, we don't have to leave the space. I guess what happens is you'll divvy up things, they'll be smaller on the inside, like if you have.
Again, the, the, the space at thirty-nine, uh, you know, has more square footage, but mu, much less efficient, you know, two, two bathrooms just when one bathroom serves, and then the additional bathroom, so it's kind of like, uh, it, it's, it's almost a wash, Brian, once, wouldn't you say, when, uh, when you take out the inefficiency of two ba, multiple bathrooms on floors and?
That was five thousand.
Of course, it's a, that's a forty percent reduction in square feet, so I don't think you could blow it all off because of inefficiencies, that's a lot of space.
Well, we are, we are going down conference rooms, right? So we're, we're losing some of the conference rooms in those spaces, and we're going down an office, but, uh,
Kevin, do we have the right of first refusal on the additional space?
No.
No?
No. We go back and look at the videotape.
Wow.
All right, so we, one last thing.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
The Board of Ed budget is gonna reflect what? Is it gonna be less money?
They currently pay, I think the number is like four forty for the entire rent, including the sixty-four thousand dollars a year that, uh, has been obligated for the renovations from ten years ago, eight years ago. Um, the Board of Ed will pay in their rent, they'll pay the cost of the carry for the, the purchase of the building, plus the original seven fifty, which has already been, will be bonded, the additional amount you're approving tonight, so, so the cost of carry for that um, to, for twenty years, which I think is a hundred, well, the total comes up to three hundred eighty thousand dollars. They will pay the um, forty-one thousand dollars a month, a year, I'm sorry, forty-one thousand dollars a year. How much is it? Eleven thousand a month? That's eleven, so the, 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 um, cost of operating the building are fifty percent. I think it's eleven thousand a month. So the total, I think, comes up to three hundred eighty thousand versus the four forty they're paying. Once that, once the bonds are paid off, then, you know, you're, you're rent-free. And the, in the future years, the Board of Ed would, would pay just the operating expenses for the building.
And I understand there's also an advantage in that payments at a locust would have escalated, whereas here, the financing payments will be flat over time, is that right?
I think your rent always escalated, uh, but, you know, thirty-nine locusts was a very reasonable rent, uh, because they had the whole building eventually.
Um, but the new arrangement is official in that it's less likely to escalate.
Well, there's no escalation. I mean, you have to, the cost of building for electricity and, and, uh, landscaping and all that is kind of like the cost of operating any building, so.
Right.
Is there any way that we can, the elevator can go down to the bottom floor?
No, you can't. Again, for the marginal benefit of, of get, having the storage space downstairs, Dr. Let's, you found a very efficient way of using the space upstairs, um, that there's already a portable, what do you call that thing? Mobile storage rack that, uh, works very well, it's gonna be repositioned, but it, uh, it's, and that was part of the loss of space in terms of the usable space, because that space downstairs is very usable storage space, but they, for ADA reasons, you can't put, you can't put storage in a floor that doesn't have access from the first floor by disabled people, so that's, uh,
So what's the plan for that space? It's just.
Well, you know, I could use it for storage, or, you know, they might put their Christmas decorations there or something that would.
Cause that's, that was a massive amount of storage down there.
It's a massive amount of storage. Um, I'm sure we can find other use by, by the town, since we're, we're the co-half owner of the basement as well.
Yeah.
And we can prorate the rent then.
Thank you. All right, uh, so we need to read the resolution. Uh, Tom, you wanna read that resolution, you have that in front of you?
Not the whole, but.
Oh, just this little piece right here.
Resolution.
Yeah.
Authorizing an appropriation of one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars for the two twenty Elm Street, twenty twenty-three project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one million three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars.
And a second. Mark. Uh, discussion.
Next time, let's make sure the elevator goes down to the basement. Next time we buy a building.
I mean, duly, duly noted. All right, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom and Mark, and now all in favor.
Christina had her hand up, does she wanna say something? Oh.
Oh, Christina, do you have a, did you want to discuss or are you voting?
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss that I really want to, I support Tom's comment that we need to see the breakdown of a project for monies that we appropriated before and specify how much the contingency is on a project, and at least be given a summary of what the bids have come in at, because there's no documentation.
Okay, yeah, I mean, Kevin did mention that we're gonna see that, so hopefully, um, how, how soon can we see that? Yeah.
He's talking about the actual.
The actual project itself. Yeah, and. Yeah, Brian, maybe when you, when, when you make your, when you make your presentation, uh, to us in March, you may have some of that information, right?
Maybe, maybe, we should by then, but I, you know, no, so sooner, if we're gonna be in negotiation with the, the low bidders, we can't.
Yeah, we don't.
Using those numbers yet.
Or when you get them, we'd like to see them.
Well, we have them, we just can't share them yet.
Yeah.
But we will share them, but we just can't do it at present, cause that would be unfair to both bidders, if you can imagine, right?
Well, but you can do it in executive session if need be.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second, and now we need to vote. So all those in favor, raise your hand. Uh, Christina, yeah, I can't see Luke, I, is he out there? Look, you out there?
I'm, I'm in support, I'm in support, yep, I'm in support.
Thank you very much. All right, that's unanimous. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Hope so, thanks.
All right, I remember five, twenty-eight Grove Street, approval of the following project appropriation and bond authorization. And tonight, we're gonna have, uh, it looks like Tiger and Kevin are here on that one, so. Uh, this is the property, obviously, that's, uh, contin, contiguous to the railroad lot, so. I think we've, we've beaten this one up pretty good, but if you have questions.
Well, we, we beat it up in executive session, so we really, I would just like to remind you, this, we, we view this as a strategic property.
Yep.
It was brought to us by real estate broker, Mr. John Angle. And you early on said this has always been a strategic property. I've been watching this property for forty, four years. Um, we always knew that someday, if you're ever gonna develop the Columbia Yard, you wanna have another alternative access point, because there's only two driveways that we own, the other driveway is not owned by us, um. Uh, so that it gives us more flexibility. It currently has a tenant, um, at fifteen hundred dollars, which is, you know, the estate has been renting it out for someone they, they just got as a quick tenant, month to month, um, if we wanted to improve, improve the property a bit, we could probably get twenty-five hundred dollars a month, um, it is, you know, anybody with a family wants to come into Canaan, they're gonna pay more than fifteen hundred dollars a month to get their kids in school, and that, you see that all, all over town. Um, so the question is, and the debate at the Board of Finance was, how much renovation should we do? There's a certain amount that's fire marshal, but we wanna align the, Tiger, you can explain lining the, the.
Blue, blue?
For safety reasons and, um, but the, I, I didn't see it inside yet, uh, Tiger and Joe Zagorensky have, and it's, uh, very nice inside. Um, it doesn't look nice on the outside, but it's point three, five acres, um, and they're comparables, I think, you know, there was a nine hundred fifty thousand dollar transaction for a smaller house over in Summer Street, so that, you know, that's kind of the market. We had an appraiser, um, give it a slightly lower valuation, but it is a strategic property for us, so it's, uh, we're gonna inventory it, carry it, you know, there's actually been an expression of someone who wants to have parking there instead, we'll look at that. We told the Board of Finance, we will justify any renovations that we're gonna do with the forty thousand dollars that's included in the, uh, we asked for a hundred, they cut it to forty. Um, and it doesn't need a new roof yet, but we got a discount on the purchase price because of the roof. Everything's a negotiation, and, um, that's a kind of the summary. Tiger, do you wanna say anything further?
No, I think you said that we are, you know, we are looking at the possibility, you know, different things, like you said, we're looking at, uh, the cost to knock it down and make it a parking lot, if that would, you know, be better served. Um, no, I'm not, I think you covered it.
Yeah, I would say the adjacent properties are, um, Stanford Hospital owns the building next door, they also own the house in front of the, the next-door house. And quite honestly, they were a potential alternative bidder, um, so we want the, uh,
It'd also be a, and a target, if you did knock it down and pave it, there'd be a target for parking possibly, but, you know, if they need it, but we won't know that until the time comes, but that, that, the idea that Stanford Hospital, they would be the ones that you would probably have to bid against because of the way they own literally on either side of that.
We were surprised they didn't come to bid, they, they, they're not very facile, they were certainly aware of it. Um, their lawyer, who we know, made them aware of it, and they just didn't decide to.
Well, it's, I mean, it's amazing, the town is able to move faster than, which is remarkable, but it's, it's, it is, a, as you discussed, we discussed it in, uh, executive, so if anybody's watching, it, it's the, it's the small house next to the, uh, Stanford Hospital Office Building. It's also, uh, as you look at it, as you exit the weed and durie or the pet pantry driveway, it's directly across the street, it's a brown, single-family house. To the left of it is, uh, Arts for Healing, and behind that is the Throop Furniture, um, uh, house, so this is a corridor that would connect Grove Street and the Railroad Lot Yard. It's the last available front-to-back piece of property on Grove Street that the town could acquire that would allow in-and-out traffic, and, you know, for the public, there's no immediate development plans for the railroad lot, there's nothing like that. This is strictly a strategic move by the town to ensure that someday we'll, we'll have the ability to get in and out of that lot with whatever we decide to do. And hopefully someday, the people will look back and say, well, those, those guys on the council and the first selectman actually did one thing right, so.
One thing.
Thank you. You know, we bought, we, we bought the lumberyard lot for five million dollars when we settled with Avalon and swapped our property, our highway garage to, uh, let them build the Avalon Apartments, so that's, it's probably the most valuable piece of property in town, and if ever it's gonna be developed, it's gonna be developed for the right thing, and we will always maintain community parking there, but building a deck is almost as expensive as building, by, buying a piece of property of that size, so actually more expensive, so, but, but if, if we have a plan, um, but in the meantime, we wanna cover the cost to carry, so after twenty years, well, outright, and then we'll, we will, as I think Todd Lively said, we will never lose money on this property if we decide to dispose of it, but.
Yeah, that's, that's really the biggest question. I mean, I think everybody's, uh, you know, at a point where we're comfortable with it. It's, as the Board of Finance discussed, though, it would be nice to know what exactly we're doing. What, are we gonna put a tenant in there? Are we gonna make it a parking lot? But, you know, I, I asked Tiger again today, and I don't think we're there yet as far as having all the numbers to, to, uh, put to.
Well, we would definitely have a tenant. The question is whether we have an improved tenant.
Right.
You know, who would give you top dollar if you did a little more renovation of the house.
Yeah, cause I, it doesn't, obviously doesn't make any sense to pay that kind of money, put a fifteen hundred dollar monthly number, something, so.
Right, we can definitely.
I wanna challenge that.
Okay.
Dime, when you get a minute.
Okay, so, uh, so let's go to Christina first, Christina.
I have a clarification question for Kevin. Who owns the other driveway to the lumberyard?
Yeah, two, two oh eight, two twelve, two oh eight, two twelve, um, office, office building, which was gonna be the new bank. It's owned by, owned by New Canaan Lumber. Earl Smith's properties were sold to the, you know, the New Canaan Lumber property were sold to three investors.
Um, they own a series of buildings in New.
They, they own the driveway.
Fifty-nine Grove and.
And they could simply not give us access anymore to our, to our, you know, the lumberyard down there, they, they, they have no obligation to. I think we may have a prescriptive easement after fifteen years, but, you know, we really haven't thought about that.
Is that the corner building?
If they block it off.
It's the old.
They've only owned it fifteen years, so maybe, maybe they'll block.
Old bank and New Canaan Building?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, so they own that alley going down, but the two exits out of Talmage, out of the parking lot are owned by the town, correct?
Well, we own all the three acres, three point one acres, including the two e, e, exits onto, uh.
Right, it's the third one we don't own then.
Third one we don't, right.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't thought of it.
Tom, you had a question.
So that, cause I understood where the Board of Finance came out is they weren't necessarily in love with the idea of ever having a tenant, but the fire marshal said, if you have a tenant for one day, you have to make the building suitable. So that drove the decision to, you know, that, that, that they took, but my point is that the tenant that's in there now is in there on a month-to-month basis. There has to be a way if it takes writing a check or whatever, to not inherit this tenant, to get the tenant out before we close.
We can, we can give notice the day we, we, we close.
No, but
Yeah.
The, what was discussed in, in Board of Finance is that whatever you do, you're gonna have that tenant, i, if you give him a month's notice or whatever, you're gonna have him for a month.
It's not a fire trap. I mean, this is just something, as, as an owner, we would, for the future, we would like to make, have that.
Or men said they didn't like the liability risk of.
Well, again, uh.
But anyway, so, but, but consider, consider my point, though. Why, why ever have a tenant? Why not arrange, negotiate? Money will get you all kinds of things in the world. Negotiate an arrangement so that you do not inherit the tenant, that the tenant's gone by the time you close.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose, I, you know, we'll go back to the town attorney and, and.
What I would do, what I would do is, is, is my strategy would be never become a landlord for this property, take the property down, pave it and, and generate whatever income you can from, uh, you know, one of the things that I, that I'm always concerned about is, is you know, people that invest in real estate, you know, do very well if they diversify their risk, but when you've only got one tenant, you come to, uh, uh, an opportunity of to develop the lumberyard, you say, man, we gotta do this thing, and the tenant says, wow, try to get rid of me.
That's right.
Try to get rid of me.
Don't wanna be a landlord.
So, that, that would be my strong suggestion, to start with a clean slate, get the tenant out of there, take the building down. Otherwise, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful concept, a wonderful transaction.
Well, we've already promised the Board of Finance to come back with options, because if parking is, is, is a viable, better option than a renter of the house, we, uh, but that's a.
I'll just accelerate that to the point where you don't start out with a tenant doing that analysis, you start out with a clean slate doing that analysis. You don't have to.
Building down is kind of a pretty definite.
No, you know, they have an analysis, right, but
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
Well, it's not a historic building, it's not a hundred years old.
It may not be historic, but, but.
It is, it is a hundred years old.
It's a hundred and five years old, so.
It's pretty old.
Hadn't thought about that, yeah.
I agree with Tom. All right, uh.
I'll say, it could be overflow office space for the Board of Ed.
You know, you know what? You're gonna have to invest in that space in order to accomplish that.
Yeah, well, the minute, the minute, the minute you start putting any money into it, and with the plan that eventually it's gonna be a driveway, that the. You know, the, the debate, the forty thousand dollar debate was, can you tear it down for forty thousand and throw pavement on it? You know, I mean, that's, you know, it's, but anyway, that's the, that's the analysis the Board of Finance has asked for, they've probably been promised they're gonna get it. A important thing we need to do tonight, though, is to move this, so.
We can close.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Can we vote on this, on that it closed with no tenant?
Our, our, our contract.
Our 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 contract right now requires us to close by January thirty one. So if the seller would agree, keep keep in mind that Stanford Hospital didn't bid, but there's other bidders out there that did bid. So.
Stanford Hospital, though, I know they're on the other side, but if you were to merge lots, don't you have to get the okay from P and Z first?
That's not the issue. The issue, there are other bidders out there that bid on this property. So if if we don't close on the thirty first, the seller could go to another bidder.
But we can put more money on the table.
Again, I I strongly suggest we close this on the thirty first.
We're we're basically strongly urging not to have a tenant, whether it's day one, day day thirty, whatever. I mean, we're just, we we feel as though having a tenant and having the town.
If you can't make a bond appropriation.
I know, but we're, so, Kim, all we're doing is sending a message from.
Well, again, I I personally don't agree with that. We'll talk to the town attorney about liability and that. But I, you can't make any bond appropriation contingent, I think.
People who have been landlords with tenants and buildings, you don't want to.
Well, we're going to need to spend the forty anyway, so the resolution's fine.
Yeah, I think. I think we. Let's vote on this. And that question can be determined later, and it's a month to month lease, which has very different terms, and you you can cancel within a certain notice period. It's fine. They'll they'll figure it out.
But you did forty thousand dollars, because it wasn't seven hundred fifty for the Board of Education. So are we going to go into this? And then all of a sudden, it's a lot more money, and then we're not, I mean, and and what determines when we get the tenant out? Like, what what is that process?
Again, I don't think you can add any conditions to this bond resolution.
I don't think we want to add any conditions. It's just a conversation, because we we only get to converse about this stuff one time. So we're voicing our feelings about, you know, direction after we give the approval, so.
Well, wouldn't we, if it becomes municipal property, don't we have to vote on a lease of municipal property, like?
Yeah, I mean, so here's the thing, if if Tiger spends forty thousand one dollars, we should hear about the one dollar. I mean, you know, it's it's a there and 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 we should ask Tiger specifically to come back to us and report on exactly what you're doing. I mean, you know, it'd be nice to know, what are we doing? What, you know, are we have, do we have the tenant out? Are we going to knock the building out? What are we doing? So but we need to, we need to make it ours first, and that's what we're trying to do tonight. So.
I would suggest Maria stay for the next meeting, because that's when we're going to talk about whether you would be able, you would need town town council approval for a lease.
Hey, then you have to notice it, just like.
Yes, yes.
Isn't that under a certain amount? If it's a month to month lease for fifteen hundred dollars, town council might not need to.
True, yeah, well, yeah. The important thing is the acquisition of strategic property. Focus.
Not sure.
Yes, Mark made a motion.
We're bending the overall lease to include.
Okay, so that was a mark.
Sorry.
And a penny second. And Mark, can you just read the?
A motion to approve resolution authorizing an appropriation of nine hundred ninety four thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars for the purchase of twenty eight Grove Street. Thousand twenty three. Financing of set appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in the amount not to exceed nine hundred ninety four thousand, seven hundred seventy five dollars.
Thank you for the discussion. All right, all those in favor? Christina, just need.
Luke.
Luke, are you up or down?
He's on mute.
Luke, unmute. I think that was a yes by him.
Saying, okay, and.
Yeah, I agree. It's Luke. I support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Luke. All right, so that's eleven four.
Sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Luke. It's eleven four and so that's one. Oh, we do? Okay. Okay. All right, you want it? Well, we want to go in order or? Okay. Hillary.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Christina?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Like I said, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So is that okay? I mean, in the future, do you want us to state our name and say yes for the transcription or, because it's just, that's a bunch of yeses. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we'll we'll try to do better next time. This is all new. All right. Motion passes. Thank you, Tiger. Thank you, Kevin. And that concludes this portion of the meeting. The one thing I just wanted to say before everybody goes, a little housekeeping. The you'll notice on some of the, on the town website, you've got some of the joint meetings going on, the budget meetings that we talked about with Board of Finance liaison. So if you haven't put that liaison meeting together, please do for the budget. There are, there's some meetings up already, so.
And Pam, and and to to that point, that's a good point. Pam is also, she's received some, some of the Board of Finance have already started those meetings, but she's going to make sure you get that, just in case there's any communication lag, so that everybody knows when these meetings are, if you're on those.
Yeah, there there's a Public Works at twelve o'clock on Monday and a General Government on at two o'clock on Monday, just FYI.
Yeah, there's a Zoom option for the Public Works one as well.
Public Safety on for Monday night. Six P M hybrid.
Health and Human Services is one o'clock on Monday.
Oh, when I say. Haven't gotten a notice.
I didn't see any of those posted.
And so it went up.
They don't have to be posted until Friday, and they're all in the works.
They're still in the.
In the works, but. Kudos to everybody for getting those things going. That's great.
And so do each of us, both finance and town council, have to notice the meeting?
One, one of you can meeting and just state that it's that it's, one person can notice it, then anybody else can attend.
The the Board of Finance has been going to notice these, because these are their regular meetings.
Okay, and so then the town council component of that does not need to also notice it.
No, I think it's just.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Tiger doesn't have to give the unadveraged presentation.
And the same with minutes, one set of minutes for both.
And yeah, and that's correct. And going and going, we want to make this as easy as easy as possible. These liaison meetings are very important, and it's important that we get them the minutes right, too. So and then finally, the town council is charged with salary review, as you remember, for certain positions, the selectman, first selectman, town clerk, et cetera.
What's up this year?
Uh, we are going to I'm as as a as a result of our last meeting, you know, I'm going to ask, I've got Mark Jimsky and Tom Butterworth on my list to ask to represent the council, and I'd like to, I'm going to ask Todd Lavier if he can appoint two similar liaisons, just do a a double liaison group and take a look at the salaries. So there's a lot of existing information. And that that group will look at salaries and then come back and report. And that's where we are. Are we good?
Yes.
Yes, yes. The next next meeting up is our bylaws and ordinance meeting, where we'll talk about affordable housing and New Canaan Building. So thank you for attending. Motion to adjourn.
Hello.
Penny, Mike seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. And we're out.
Yep.